We are able to make a start now if everybody is ready.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, welcome everybody to our annual meeting. The first item on the agenda is to elect a chairperson for the role of mayor. Does anybody have a nomination?
I have.
Tony, who's your nomination please?
Bob Swan.
Do we have a second for Bob? Barbara, I can see you've got your hands up.
Yes, I'd like to second Bob Swan, please.
Okay, are there any other nominations? No, in that case, are we in agreement then colleagues that Bob is now the mayor of our town council?
We are.
Yeah, Bob, I'm going to hand over to you now to chair the rest of the meeting.
Thanks for that Claire and thanks everyone for your support and thanks Claire, I bet you made up now that you've actually got rid of that.
Very good.
Thanks everyone for your support, I hope I sort of keep up to the mark for it, I'm sure I'll tie me down as soon anyway. Can I just, before I have to move on, in regards to the chairmanship that Claire actually has undertaken in the last few months, quite a year. But no, the town council this time last year more or less was in disarray. It was in fight soon, it was actually sort of had a negative attitude to the community at large, it was going downhill sort of pretty quickly. We managed to, all the councillors, we managed to, all of us actually sort of managed to turn it around and drag it back to its feet and we're doing great. We're working together as a team, all work for the community and Claire has played an important role in this over the time with her chairmanship and directing the council forward. So I mean, the applause is out there, I've got to applaud you Claire because you've done a fantastic job for us in this last few months. It's a pity you never got the full year out of it, but you've done a very, very supportive job and I'm sure that everyone agrees with that situation. But well done Claire, thank you.
Thank you Bob.
Can I move us on then to apologies, to receive a record of apologies please?
There are no apologies for the meeting Chair. Everyone's full and present.
Okay, so item four then on the agenda then is to vice chairperson of the town council. And this is to appoint a vice chair for the town council for 202021. Have I got any nominations? Shall I go through, do you want me to go through one by one or what do you want, what do you want to call out?
Barbara Dunne.
Barbara Dunne from Tony, right. Have we got a second for that?
Can I second Barbara please Chair?
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Rose seconded that.
Thank you. Any further nominations? No? Can I move that nomination cease then colleagues?
Agreed.
Did you say no then? We'll get you afterwards. Okay, so.
Agreed.
So everyone's agreed with that, everyone okay with that, yes?
Agreed.
Agreed, okay. I know it's a bit awkward me shouting out agreeing and I should actually go through one by one, but I'm going to save time. But well done Barbara and welcome to the role of vice chair. You probably won't like them for it after you've been in for a few months, but welcome and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to the madhouse.
Yes, yes. Now, item five then is the Chair of the Policy and Finance Committee. Have you any nominations for that role?
Can I make a nomination please Chair?
Yes please, Claire.
Can I nominate Ken Dalton please Chair?
Can I second?
So we've got a proposal seconded for Ken, any further nominations?
Martin, yeah.
Say that again please Jerry.
I was just repeating that the seconding came from councillor Martin.
Yes, I realised that, I saw that, yes, thank you. So what we've actually got colleagues, yes, is councillor Rose's proposal and councillor Martin's seconded for councillor Dalton to take the chairmanship of the Policy and Finance Committee. Is there any further nominations? I'm going to move then that nomination cease and are we all in favour of those nominations? Any against?
Agreed.
Agreed.
So I hear no calls for against, I think that's unanimous. Well done Ken, so welcome on board to the madhouse in that role as well.
I'm not going to say thank you.
Right, I will, thank you all. Right colleagues, that takes us past the nominations now on to the minutes. And item six then is to approve and sign the minutes of the special town council meeting held on the 12th of March 2021. I'll just go through, I'll do it at the right pace, I'll go through every one of these. Councillor Dalton, do you approve?
Agreed.
Councillor Dunne?
Agreed, thank you.
Councillor Graves? Councillor Graves? I'm getting nothing from them.
Agreed, thanks.
Councillor Harvey?
Agreed.
Councillor Lukoch?
Agreed.
Councillor Martin?
Okay.
Councillor Rose?
Agreed.
Councillor Samuels?
Agreed.
And myself, I agreed obviously. Just going back to councillor Graves again, that's an audible response then.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. So those minutes, so we've agreed that I approve and sign them. Item B for six, six B is to approve and sign the minutes of the meeting of the town council held via the Zoom which was held on the 6th of May 2020. Again, laboriously, I'm going to go through each and every one of it, are you agree with that and that I sign those minutes? And it's councillor Dalton?
Agreed.
Councillor Dunne?
Agreed.
Councillor Graves?
Yeah.
Councillor Harvey?
Agreed.
Councillor Lukoch?
Agreed.
Councillor Martin?
Agreed.
Councillor Rose?
Agreed.
Councillor Samuels?
Agreed.
And I add the last name to that. Moving on then to item seven which is the town council governance and the terms of reference. And this is to confirm the continued use of the key governance documents which has been previously distributed to each and every councillor and agreed by councillors for the 202021 period. We did say we've got some work to do on this, but because of the conditions we're actually working under at the moment and particularly sort of working under Zoom, we can deal with them as the year goes on. But for the time being, we've all agreed that, you know, we'll agree the terms of reference which include the standing orders, members' code of conduct and financial regulations. And unless I err to the contrary, are we in agreement with that?
Agreed.
So I agree, I take a big, I don't agree to it, thank you colleagues. Item B of the town council governance is the meeting cycle for 2020 to 2021. Have you any comments or observations on them? No. Can I make a few comments then please?
Please do.
Looking at the timescale, you find these on the last page of your report, looking at the timescale that we've got down. The falling about the 2nd Thursday of the month. Now, if you're thinking about some decisions we need to take, particularly wrapped around the financial decisions and getting word back from central government in regards to the precept. We really need to actually have, hold these on the 3rd Thursday of the month rather than the 2nd Thursday. And rather than sort of try and work it out now, because of the special conditions we're working under, I'm sort of asking that we accept these particularly, the schedule of the town council for indicative only. So that we can actually change them as we need to, as we move on through the year. And that will accommodate what we've got to do with Zoom and maybe even get back a proper meeting job here. On the policy and finance meeting, the last meeting is Thursday, April 29th 2021. Now, the policy and finance has got to be ratified by full council, so it cannot be the last meeting of the year. So that meeting has to be taken off because policy and finance, as I said, needs to have a follow-up meeting by the council to ratify the decisions on it. So are we in agreement that we take that Thursday, April 29th off that charge?
Agreed. Nice one Bob, I didn't notice that one, I should have done.
Yeah, I see that you're the Chair. That's the first mistake you've made, you've already been at this job five minutes. Well, I've made about half a dozen at the moment, I have rushed that through colleagues, I've gone through, through, I've seen it through. I thought we'd be another quarter of an hour, yeah, he's going one by one around the table. As time goes on, I will improve on that, apologies for that, but I will improve on that. I'll do the goodest job as Claire does by going round one by one, so. If there's no further comments then, we come quickly to the end of that meeting. Is there any further comments coming back?
Chair, we've got to do reps on outside bodies, last item on the agenda.
Yeah, it shows how good I am at this, doesn't it?
It was going so well.
He wants his job back.
Sorry Bob, you haven't broke my shortest meeting record this time.
No, no, I was trying to beat Terry Powell. Anyway, representative of outside bodies, this will take some time colleagues, I'm going to have to take it one by one I'm afraid. So we need to appoint representatives and any nominated deputies if required to serve on the under-mentioned outside bodies. The first one is Liverpool Airport Consultative Committee. Any nominations?
Mayor? Can I make a nomination please Chair?
Yes Claire.
Can I nominate Ken Dalton please?
Thank you for that.
Can I nominate yourself?
Right, can I nominate Susan please?
Thank you Tony.
Okay, just to recap on that colleagues.
Can I also nominate Suzanne, thank you.
Okay, just to recap on that, we've got Ken, Claire.
No, sorry, I nominated, correction Chair, I nominated Ken, I didn't put myself forward. It's as far as I understand it, it's councillor Dalton and councillor Harvey who've been nominated to.
May I, may I interject, may I interject Chair as well? We had councillor Rose nominate councillor Dalton. We had, but do not have a second yet. For councillor Harvey, we had councillor Lukoch propose councillor Dunne second, which is absolutely fine. So we do still need a second for councillor Dalton.
Thanks for that, I did somebody.
I second.
Councillor Martin is second, did councillor Dalton, thank you.
I thought, I thought I had, yeah.
All right. Okay, so councillor Martin second for Ken, okay. Any further nominations for that one? No.
Suzanne.
Well, we've got Suzanne and we've got Ken, okay. So shall we go round?
Can I second Suzanne then please?
Who was that?
It was me, can I second Suzanne?
It's not Yvonne?
Yeah.
Yvonne. Suzanne has been, yeah.
Yeah, we already have a proposal, yeah, yeah.
We've already had a proposal and second before for Suzanne, haven't we?
Yeah. Mine keeps breaking off.
It was Tony who actually proposed, wasn't it? And Barbara that actually seconded. Is that right Jerry?
Yeah, I think that's correct, yeah. I think it's a connection issue for Yvonne, to be fair Chair.
Okay. Are you still able to air us, are you Yvonne? Okay.
Mayor?
Is that Yvonne then?
Yeah.
Yes.
I like it when it goes well. Okay, so we've got, let's go for Ken. Ken yourself, are you happy to accept the proposal?
Yes.
Okay. Councillor Dunne, you're staying with councillor Harvey, yes?
Yes, I'd like to support councillor Suzanne Harvey for this meeting.
Councillor Graves? You were saying was councillor Harvey as well, did you say? Yeah. Councillor Harvey, no doubt you're supporting yourself, are you Sir?
Oh yes.
Okay. Councillor Lukoch?
Who were they?
Who were they?
Susan.
Susan, he said, Susan.
Okay. Councillor Martin?
Councillor Ken Dalton.
Okay. Councillor Rose?
Ken Dalton please Chair.
Councillor Samuels?
Ken Dalton please Chair.
And myself. I'm going with Ken as well, so that's five for Ken. And four for Suzanne, is that right Jerry?
Correct, yeah, yeah, five for, yeah.
So Ken, you've got the airport.
Thank you.
The next one is St Mary's Day Centre.
May I come in on that Chair?
Yeah, this is to be confirmed later on, isn't it?
Yes, it is, so I do not proceed, we go to a selection on this one as well. Where we'd left it with St Mary's was in advance of the annual meeting, we were to confirm or otherwise whether or not we would be sending a representative. So we haven't done that yet with St Mary's Day Centre. Once we have, obviously I will bring it back to council for your decision.
Okay, is that acceptable to everyone?
Just come in there Chair. Can I just come in Chair?
Tony, you've got the floor, yeah.
No, no. Concerning St Mary's, when I was appointed to be on the board, I went along there to see them and they declined any participation by the council. They no longer wanted anyone. So I would think that would still be the same.
Okay.
They didn't give a reason, they just said they declined the offer.
Can I, can I make a comment about that please Chair?
Ken?
Yeah, last time I was on it, which was a couple of years ago, I was on for the full year and I didn't have one single meeting. They kept making excuses about meetings, I had one meeting when two people turned up and myself, which was not enough to start a meeting and that was it. So they're very backward in coming forward on their meetings anyway, to be honest.
If I may and suggest again there Chair, I have nothing against St Mary's in that sense, they were always prompt. I was with them for 15 years as a volunteer and a representative and I never had a problem with them. Unfortunately, I think the interest by the management committees declined where they're down to where they used to have 12 on a committee. I think they now have about five or four since the new vicarage arrived as well it seems. So I don't know what's going on there, but I've never found a problem with management meetings and information given and taken.
Thanks for that Tony.
Chair, can I make a proposal please? That we asked Jerry to contact St Mary's and see whether they would like a rep and we can, if they would like one, we can have a vote at a future meeting.
Yeah, I agree and I'll support that Claire as well. I think Jerry was saying, I think we probably will all be in agreement with that because I mean, we need to get some direction from them on where the goal is.
Yeah.
If everyone's okay with that, we'll just leave it in a vein and let Jerry sort of contact and see where they actually want to go. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes, thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you. So the next one on the agenda then is Merseyside Association of Local Councils Malk. We want two people for this, for this outside body, have you any nominations for that? Sorry Jerry.
Sorry Chair, just to remind you, two representatives for both Malk and LALC which will be coming next.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Can I nominate?
Go on Fiona.
Oh, sorry, can I nominate Ken?
Okay, yeah, you're second for that.
I'll second that.
Claire?
Yeah, I was seconding Ken please Chair.
Okay.
Okay, right. Right.
Chair, excuse me please.
Yes, you've relieved the room Barbara.
Could I self-nominate for the Malk please?
Yes.
If anyone would like to care to second me please.
I'll second you Barbara. Tony.
Thank you.
Okay, any further nominations? No further nominations, okay, I'll go round the table again. You have to forgive me, when I'm writing things down, I can't look at the screen at the same time, so I've never seen your hand going up then Barbara. So, okay, so I'll go round the tables, so. Those for support for councillor Dalton then, Ken obviously, I would say if you want to support.
Chair, sorry, can I interrupt, there's two representative places and we've got two people, can I just move that Ken and Barbara go forward as our two reps?
Yeah.
Just to speed things up a bit.
Do you know what, I don't know what to do without you. I'm panicking on, yeah, she's quite right, you're quite right again, no wonder you were an excellent Chair. We have two nominations put forward and if there's no more nominations, shall we sort of accept those two nominations for that role?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Chair, just before you move on to the next one which is LALC, just to state that we have lost councillor Graves. So could I just ask for a moment while we just try to reconnect Yvonne?
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
I must admit, in the interim, when I was actually at the last meeting, I was quite happy to just sort of just watch the muse and then watch people. And then press the muse on and off when I needed to. But taking this role of trying to cheer and see warm and look for any sort of hand signs and whatever, it's quite daunting. It's not what I expected, I'll tell you.
No, no, it's not easy, is it? It's strange.
And have we got Yvonne back with us, yes?
No, we've not been, we've not been successful, so I mean, obviously we are in the midst of the meeting, so I would recommend we obviously continue. We have got eight at night councillors present, so obviously we are quarrelled. But we'll try and connect Yvonne obviously.
Barbara?
Would I propose that we connect Yvonne by voice, by telephone please?
She's just typing, she's just contacting me now, give me one second. She said she's trying to get back on, obviously, yeah. I'll say.
That's a lovely picture of Ellen.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, internet gone.
Yeah, I'll call Yvonne and we'll just put the phone up against it like we did one time with councillor Lukoch, one second everyone.
Hi Yvonne. Yvonne, we're good, no, don't worry about it, we'll do it, no, don't worry, we'll do it this way, I've got you on speakerphone. So obviously you can now kind of rejoin the meeting, but we'll have to just do it through the phone as I'm doing with you now as well. But we can't, we can't hear you. When we lost you, there was two nominations for two places put forward for Malk, the Merseyside Association of Local Councils. And councillor Rose had made a proposal that because there was no further nominations, we just moved to accept those two nominations. Who was councillor Dalton and councillor Dunne. So we're now moving on to the next one which is LALC, okay? But I'll keep the phone, I'll keep the phone by the device. Chair, back to you. For LALC, we've had two nominations again. We had Fiona nominated Ken, seconded by Claire and Barbara nominated Barbara, seconded by Tony. So we've got two nominations again, is there any further nominations? If there isn't, as Claire reminded me, we want two positions for that, that we accept those two positions for that role. Is that agreed colleagues?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you.
Thank you. The next one, another two seats on this particular group and that's the Culture Fest Stirling group. Have you anyone who would like to propose any nominations for that?
Could I make a nomination please Chair?
Yes Claire.
Could I nominate councillor Samuels please?
Yeah.
Oh, Simon, you're doing some work. Only kidding Dave. All right, so you're second for that.
I'll second him.
Okay. Any further nominations? Did I hear somebody else say something then? No further nominations?
There's still one vacancy Chair.
Yeah, there's still one vacancy, it looks like Dave's going to be on his own soon.
Having said that Chair, there are going to be actually three because councillor Martin and myself are already on the committee, but not on the Culture Fest committee, but not for the town council, so we're going to have to.
We'll only be, yeah, you will be able to source of support.
I will be in good company.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll take that nomination on if there's nobody else.
I'll second Tony.
Okay.
Have you said the nominations? Councillor Lukoch.
I second Tony.
Any further nominations?
No.
As we've done with the last two, we've got two seats and two nominations put forward, so do we accept those two nominations for that? Yes?
Agreed.
Yes Chair, agreed.
Nice colleagues.
Thank you.
The last and final one on that is the Cooperative Councils Innovation Network. One place on this, any proposals, nominations?
Chair, could I make a nomination please?
Yes Claire.
Can I nominate councillor Ken Dalton please?
All right, thank you, any second for that?
I'll second that.
I'll second it.
Well, who wants to second then, if it's a choice?
Councillor Samuels.
Dave, you came in after me, okay. So we'll take Claire and Dave as the second for that, okay, Claire's the proposal and Dave's the second.
Can I nominate yourself for that?
Yes. Have we got the second for Susan?
Yes, can I second councillor Harvey, thank you.
Okay. Okay, go round the table then, is there any further nominations? No, okay. Let's go round the table then, first of all, we'll go round for Ken. Ken, obviously you wanted to support yourself, so I take that as read. Councillor Dunne, you've actually seconded Suzanne, so you're with Suzanne. Councillor Graves? Have we lost her again? No, no, she's here, this is Yvonne, Cooperative Councils Innovations Network, so you now have a choice to vote for either councillor Dalton or councillor Harvey.
Okay, yeah, councillor Harvey please.
So Yvonne voted for councillor Harvey. Thanks Jerry. Suzanne, obviously you're going to vote for yourself. Tony?
Councillor Harvey.
Fiona?
Councillor Dalton.
Claire?
Councillor Dalton please Chair.
Well David, you proposed, so it's councillor Dalton, yes?
Councillor.
You were second, didn't you? I've lost track of that, I've got four votes for.
Four Chair, four Chair.
Four, four? Say that again please Jerry.
It is, yes.
Four, four?
It's four votes each for councillor Dalton and councillor Harvey.
Okay. All right. Now, cooperative, predominantly a Labour cooperative and Ken's had the experience on that, so I'm going to, unfortunately, go with Ken on this one, to support Ken on this. He's done a good job and he's got the experience behind him, so apologies for that Suzanne, but he has got the experience on it. So.
That was the Culture Fest one, wasn't it councillor?
No, that was the Cooperative Councils Innovative Network. That's the one that Ken's been through all years, he's done the way it comes to now and he's fully aware of what he do and what he don't do. Okay, that's, so that's the end of the outside bodies then, I'm telling you that, Ken, you're on that one. So, just looking at the report nervously again to make sure that I don't make a mistake again.
Would you do such a thing, of course you wouldn't.
No, 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 I'm making you a, okay, so that's it then, that is the end of this reason. And we did stumble through, I stumbled through, you didn't, you done well, done exceptionally well. Thank you for your attendance and just wanted. Thank you for your attendance. And just wanted to bring it, before we actually close down, just bring it to Gerry for any closing remarks, he's the host of the meeting, Gerry.
Nothing from me Chair, just want to thank everybody for their, you know, for their participation and their patience today as well. And also thank the residents who've joined us for the meeting as well.
Thank you, and I echo that. Keep yourselves safe everyone and I'll speak to you next time, thank you.
Thank you Bob.
Thank you everybody. Bye bye.
Thank you Bob.
Okay, Yvonne, off. Welcome, bye.